Minutes of August 12th, 2020.
I did note one type of under agenda review disposition, number one, student strike assistant from superintendent's title. I didn't see any other corrections.
Okay. Make a motion with Phil's change.
I make a motion to accept the corrections.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's so fun that everyone's here.
Uh huh.
All right. Privilege of the floor, number one. Thank you for coming. Who would like to speak first this evening? We'll start with in-house and then whoever wants to go on Zoom can go second. No? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during privilege of the floor, number one?
Maybe raise your hand, turn your video on.
No?
I'm sorry. Yeah?
Okay. Hi, Mike.
Hi. Mike's on PES student parent. I was just wondering if there was any decisions made. Well, first of all, great job on the administration on those that opened house on Friday and started so slowly. I just want to ask two things. One, my kid walked home and they told me that there was two officers down at the exit of the high school. And so I'm just wondering, there was one at the exit and then there was another officer at that stop sign. And I'm just wondering if those officers are going to be there for the time being indefinitely or this is just like a, just for the first week?
So are these, where's the exit?
He means out on Merrill Street.
Yes, sorry, Merrill Street.
Okay. So typically, so our drop off this morning was a little bumpy and a little rocky. So we have some kinks to work out as, you know, we have over 80% of our parents driving kids to school, which is a lot. So we're trying to figure out what the best route is to dismiss parents instead of going back up Highland. It was a little hectic this morning. Two of our police officers were pulled off to do other detail in the middle of our drop off. So we found out later that on Merrill Street, I know you probably can't even see me, but on Merrill Street that the officers were supposed to be there and I guess weren't, but we're going to have them there for the time being until we find something that is, we can ensure safety with our faculty as well. But right now, they said they are able to be there for us as we work out the kinks and see if we need to make any adjustments in the coming week or next week as well. So for now, yes.
Sorry. One other quick question. Is there, was there any decision made on fall sports?
So fall sports were voted on in the initial opening plan to move ahead with them following the New Hampshire youth sports and NHIAA guidelines that the high school is following with as well, which is a delayed start for different risk sports. I think the piece that we are deciding tonight is around the participation of students from other schools within the SAU, which we tabled from last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And I forgot to read this right to know because I forget it every time. So I'm going to read it now before we start. As Chair of the Plymouth School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically for the August 31st, 2020 school board meeting. We're utilizing Zoom meeting for this electronic meeting. You can find the Zoom information on the SAU website, www.sau48.org. It is also posted on the door of the school. If you're not able to access this meeting, please contact Tanya Orlando at torlando@pennbaker.org. If the public cannot access this meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Thanks for letting me read that. Sorry for that. So moving on to principal's report.
So I wanted to give folks a little bit of an update on how the opening went and how the professional development days went. We had five days of professional development with the teachers. The first thing that we did with the teachers was to look at the remote survey results from the spring. Parents and teachers took out, completed a form to give feedback regarding remote learning. And we, each team level looked at their specific information from the parents and then worked quite quickly to develop a plan for moving forward to increase time with students and structure if we do need to move to remote. Very quickly, we moved into Google training. So we trained all of our faculty in the new Google websites and Google Classroom. We did, we broke into small teams by wing to make sure that the faculty really knew how to use those tools well. We also worked with our faculty around social emotional supports as kids come back and their needs for connection. We really wanted to make sure that both paraeducators and staff had information about how kids might be feeling and that we worked through specific questions that might be asked of them and how they could respond. And we brainstormed that in an open setting so that people had practice in how to, how they might respond to students with big questions. We also worked, all faculty had a full day in their classroom to prep their classroom. And we began touring the outdoor classrooms. So we wanted teachers to see the spaces that we would be using for outdoor classrooms because Mrs. Carey and I decided that that was going to be a real integral part of our reopening plan. So that's a sort of an overview of the PD days. Want to let you know that we opened today. We had a full enrollment. Only five students were out for a variety of things. So we had very good attendance today and already we've had four families who were in remote learning decide to come back in the last six hours. So people are moving towards, towards coming back. This afternoon, we did meet with our team about both AM drop off and PM pickup. We need to fine tune both of those to make them be a little more efficient, in particular, not having kids get out and travel through traffic. I am not comfortable with that and it's going to mean that parents need to be very patient, but that's an absolute for me. In addition, we're going to make sure first graders get dropped off specifically to adult to adult so that first graders really are, we were doing that with kindergarteners and after reflection, we need to do that with first graders as well. But overall, today was fantastic. One of the most exciting things about today was that this past Friday and Saturday, a team of people worked to set up 31 outdoor classrooms, including 40, 400 tree stumps in 31 different locations. So we had a donation from Wade Reed in Rumney, donated a double load of massive 24-inch logs, diameter logs. And starting Friday at about 1:00, in the middle of the third orientation session, we started to hear the chainsaws out back. And the team worked quite late on Friday night and then Saturday morning, starting at 7:00 AM in the pouring rain to get all of our 31-plus outdoor classrooms up and running. And they were in full use today. Kids outside, having fun together, and it was an absolute beautiful thing to see. We have Chromebooks ready for second through eighth graders. There is a delay in Chromebooks for our K1 students at this time. We do not have backups enough for them. They will, when they're in the building, we'll have a set where we're working with those kids to teach them about their Google Classroom, but they will not have a Google Class, a Google or a Chromebook assigned to them. We just don't have enough devices at this time. But overall, things are off. We have, you know, full enrollment and full staffing, so we are good to go.
Excuse me, Tanya, what is the enrollment?
387, including our virtual learners. We have 69 virtual learners, but I think it's down to about 66 or possibly 65. There are families who are making decisions here in the last few moments, so. And we really are open to what that, those families need and want. And our, at the last meeting, we made a decision to have some virtual learning facilitators, two staff people, and we are working hard to develop the supports for our virtual learners. V-Lax, as many people know, is closed for elementary school. There is, there are no more openings. The district has decided to buy a program called MobiMax, which will support our elementary school children. And Scott Southworth will be working with our K-4 kids and Jen Deloge will be working with our fifth through eighth graders to help them both with the online platforms that they're using, but also to access our curriculum and our materials, including our books. And those students will still access our special ed programming and our food service program.
So a question about MobiMax. If we go to remote, will the kids go on that or will be, it'll be teacher instruction?
It will be, if our in-person learners move to remote, they will be supported by our PES faculty.
Coming back to the Chromebooks, are we still anticipating an order?
Yes, they're backed up nationwide. I mean, at this point, yeah, we're hoping for late fall, I think.
Yeah, 180.
We have 180 Chromebooks that we're waiting for, so.
Eighty originally for this year and then 100 to go one-to-one.
Some of the one, some of the Chromebooks we're using are, they're at their last, in their last moments of life. They're getting us through.
That's fine. I was just curious about the status. I know you had mentioned that we were waiting in the past and I wasn't sure if there was any data on the status of that order. Thank you.
I have another quick question. MobiMax, is that the SAU or does each district have to buy their own license? So we bought a licensed SAU-wide and just split it out by district, by the number of kids that would be using it.
Okay.
We had a question. Oh, it's not that time yet. Okay. Sorry.
And do you have an update, Kelly?
Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to move on to the handbooks that you got at the last school board meeting, which was the 2020-2021 parent-student handbook. So we're looking for approval of that this evening. And just so you know, I think I also gave you an opening letter that would also go with this this year. The handbook is essentially the same, even though so much has changed right now. It would have been another full recreation of Tanya and I having to do this whole handbook over again from start to finish. So the only things that have really changed in here were some personnel, some phone extensions, and we're asking people to utilize this, utilize our back-to-school guidelines, and obviously, if they have any questions, to make sure that they're communicating with both Tanya and I in the front office. Did anybody have questions?
I do have some questions. I reviewed this document. Should we reflect for this year some of the changes that are being made? Like on page 13, it says supervision begins at 7:45 and students should arrive between 8:00 and 15:00. Do you want to, I mean, if you're going to have people go to this as a document, I feel like it should reflect what, even though it could change what it is right now, I feel like it should update, be updated to reflect that because if you're having people go to this as a document, it should reflect what is current for this year? And then, and like you said, I mean, obviously, it's going to be a fluid document because things are going to change, but I thought that was an important piece, this, the beginning, the beginning part. Just general questions about how it's all going to work with this year. School physician, who's our school physician? On page 19, it says the school health policies, like third row down the board allows, follows the advice of the school physician.
We contract out with the hospital.
So let's see. Okay. And then again, on page 23, it says playground supervision will occur in the morning at 7:45 for a playground recess. X that out for sure. And then the cafeteria is still opening for breakfast, but.
For the, for students who are signed up for the before-school program through Parks and Rec, yes. And the grab-and-go breakfasts this morning did work very well.
And then, you know, like the lost and found is going to be different, like we spoke about earlier. And then when we have our early delay, I think it's important because we're not going to be able to, if we have a two-hour delay, normally you can drop your kid off at a certain time before the time, but that's again, not going to happen this year. So I know there's certain things, but I feel like it should reflect.
It should reflect it.
Yeah. Because if you want a parent to go to here and I'm a parent, I go to the handbook and it says one thing and you can't actually do that. It's important to have it. Be the same. And let's see, look at my little tabs here.
I can, they're good.
And are our parent-teacher conferences going to be virtual this year?
They'll be an option either way.
Okay. I put a note to show my daughter. And then the dates on page 45, are those the most accurate, the up-to-date progress reports are going to go out?
Yes, those are changed.
Yeah. Note, those are accurate.
Those are accurate. Okay. I only have one more tabbing.
Yes. We're open to them.
And well, my question too, about on page 58, the snow, will snow days count this year? I'm sure that's a question that a lot of parents are going to ask, so.
I would like to talk about that in the upcoming school board meeting. I'm not ready to talk about it tonight.
Table that to the next one.
Hoping, although it has to be soon enough before the snow flies, so.
All right.
I'm not there yet today. We just started school.
I know. We just started school.
Still doing the blizzards yet.
And that's all the questions that I have. If you guys have any questions?
No, thank you. You got it. Thank you.
Would you feel comfortable moving forward with approval with the amendments?
Yep, I have circled and written, so we'll just get all those different times and dates.
The handbook with the necessary updates as Amy pointed out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one was the responsible technology use, which both Carol LaVasa and John Ramsey went through and reviewed, and there are no significant changes at all to this document.
There aren't any questions on this one?
I see a tab. What's the tab?
I know. Just one. Well, it just says, I know, I guess I'll review it. All student work is copyrighted and permission to publish any student work requires permission from a parent or guardian, my little note does. Does this contradict what's written on page six in the top, top section? Should it change to match? So page six in the top section talks about blanket permission form signed by the parent, any student appearing. So I just wasn't sure if it should match, the language should match.
It's a blanket, it's a blanket permissionism for student work.
I think it's.
It's different. Okay. That's the only tab I had on this one. So is there a lot of making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Perfect. Thanks, Ryan.
Second.
Your second up, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Justice, as, what else do you have?
Nope. And just others, before we move on to talking a little bit about athletics, is we have our first safety committee meeting on Wednesday, so. Thank you.
The only other piece is part of the principal's report, although I'm speaking about it, but is you approved sports. When we first redid the reopening plan, obviously, we're going to move cautiously and there's delayed starts and we'll look at, you know, really condensing travel or looking at local data and figuring that piece out as, we can't really predict each day at this point, but we're hoping to move forward with it. What, the question we had the last meeting and parents have been asking, and it's something that has to come in front of the board, is do you, do you allow other students from the SAU to join certain sports? So at this point, you, I think you have kids that typically come to field hockey and it's kids, students.
Football, field hockey, cross-country, and we actually have some others that are looking to jump in because their schools are not doing sports in the SAU. Rumney Head, but though I just couldn't email.
Yeah, that's not.
Right.
So they, all, all of them will have some sort of options, so it's if they don't offer the team. So some of our small schools only have like a five-to-eight soccer team, so they may come join your field hockey team. So it's just something I know you're going to think about, so thoughts?
So I have some questions about that. The students that want to join, are they being screened? Like, are we screening? I can't remember the original, like our sports team. Well, if they come to school and they're a Plymouth student, we know they're screened.
They're being screened, but I would recommend that they, they are screened again when they come to our fields.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Because that's part of the New Hampshire youth sports as well, that they get, they're asked those questions as well.
And then obviously, like your face mask and trying to stay six feet apart.
So all of the, all of the schools within the district that would have kids come in or would this be open to homeschool kids as well?
So it's always open to your, your Plymouth homeschool kids or, I mean, it's.
District-wide?
Mm-hmm. But it's something you can limit or, or, you know, look at as well, but. So at this point, which schools, is it usually Wentworth and Rumney are so small that they come or? Well, they, some, you might get a person or two maybe from.
I mean, football, we pick up students from any of our SAU schools.
Football's vague and field hockey's vague with holderness.
Field hockey tends to be a lot of holderness. We also have had a few Rumney students last year in the past.
Any volleyball?
We have not.
Cross-country?
Yes. And cross-country is same thing across the span of SAU.
So how, how would we monitor the contact? You know, if somebody turns up and somebody in their family has it? Like right now, within our home school, we, we know the kids are in the classrooms and who they're sitting next to, but how do we, how does that, would that? It does open up a different risk factor. Other camps, I mean, to, other camps have been happening and kids are traveling all over at this point anyways. The high school's moving forward with all of their sports and basically, you know, they're regional high schools, so they're coming from everywhere. They do the screening. It's the same questions as this question's here, which asks, you know, do you have any symptoms? Do, or have you been around anybody who, who is positive? And have you traveled outside of New England? It's all the same one day, be asking again. You have to remember, all of our SAU kids are asked the same questions in the morning.
If, if by chance, there is a small outbreak in a school that has athletes that come to Plymouth, would those, would all of those athletes be ineligible then?
It could be effective. Can I ask, another question I would have is, do we need to have those kids for us to compete, our numbers such that we would?
I would say definitely in the sport of football. For an example, last year, we were almost a 50-50 split with, I think we had 15 from Plymouth Elementary, I'm sorry, 14 from Plymouth Elementary and 13 were SAU.
Big decision, Isaac.
So I guess I will just speak to a couple of issues that are potential issues in terms of if we move forward with a regular schedule. And talking with the bus company, obviously, the high school is going to take precedent, getting them to their athletic venues. There is a concern of not having the busing to get us to events. I know that they have said, within the SAU, that would be fine, would be helpful, but we play most of our schedule outside of the SAU, generally because the SAU schools don't have all the sports that we do, so we need to go outside. Or we really need to change up times, which could be difficult because I can't control another school's start time. So we could be leaving here very late to go play a game. So that's, the busing is a concern, so I just want to put that out there because I, you know, if I have a moment where the bus company is telling me, Kelly, we don't have a bus to get you to this event, I just want people to understand that, that I may have to cancel from time to time.
Yeah, so I think we'd start out with a lot of skills and drills like the high school and just go very slowly. It's very delayed. Football can't even start a game till, I think, the first date that they're allowed to have a game is September 25th. So it's a shortened season, something to offer the kids, and we just play it week by week. You may have a very flexible schedule if, if anything, so.
Do we know what districts we would be, if we were to travel, what districts, where would we be going to travel? Because that would be a concern.
So my recommendation would be within the region.
And generally, that's what we, what we are. I mean, our furthest trips are Berlin and Kennet, North Conway. Otherwise, everyone is Lakes Region. I think one school goes, one team goes to Kirisage this year. Last year, they came to us, so we were scheduled to go to them. But, and again, too, there's still a lot of schools that are in holding patterns, like Newfound has, they're not doing anything. They're not offering sports or intramurals. Big part of that for them was their busing. But there's a lot of schools this week, same thing. So there's a, there's a big holding pattern going on right now for middle school sports and a lot of it has to do with the busing.
Financial question. Do the schools that send kids over here pay a fee for their kids? They do. Okay. Not that that matters in my decision.
There is a participation, excuse me, a participation fee, yes.
I think the benefits to all the kids are worth the risk. I think the risk is low. We have very low disease activity in this part of the state. I would be in favor of allowing the other kids to come.
I would second that if that's a motion.
If we're at a motion, I don't know if we're in a motion, sure. It is a motion.
We've always discussed motion once it's on the floor, so.
Yes.
I would, I would second that.
So, so motion.
With the understanding that, you know, if a particular school has an outbreak that kids who are not going to school there also not participate in athletics.
And a further understanding that it's going to be very flexible and if a game gets canceled because we don't have a bus, then that's just how it is.
Or we don't have kids.
And they might do skills and drills till Columbus Day.
That's the other piece, too. I'm not sure at this point, too, our, our signups are not where they normally are, but that's also, usually I'm having the kids sign up in the spring before they even leave for the school year. And I'm sure that there's probably several parents. I've answered a lot of emails from parents and they're probably on the fence and, and waiting to, to see what we were going to do.
I've gotten phone calls from parents as well.
Yeah.
I definitely think it's important to, I don't know, but I agree with what you guys are saying as well.
Will we be monitoring also where they're going to be playing, if they're playing other teams?
Yeah, we'll be looking at, I mean, we'll consult with our health officials and, and get the correct data from wherever they're going. And if it's zero cases and zero cases, maybe that's a good trick to take. Some of our, I know that some of our high school schedules may play the same team in one week, just keep the same, you know, one away, one home. It's just, but we're not at the schedule phase yet. We're getting there. It's going to be a delayed start, but I think to just start, the wheels turning, people are asking, we're in school now, so I think that's the next step. So do you, do you feel that you can handle like that, that constant trying to make a decision about what, you know, the other school where their kids are going to participate, you know, where they're at health-wise? Well, I think you start really slow and I'm talking, you know, a handful of games. Well, I think you start really slow and I'm talking, you know, a handful of games. Cause most of the time, middle school sports are over by mid-October, so, if they don't start till after Labor Day, you know, and then they have a couple of weeks of practice, you're already at the last week of September. And so, they may play a couple towns a couple times and that may be the end of it, but it's, it's something.
I, I think the opportunity, although games are always way more fun than practice, I think the opportunity for kids to get out and be physical and be on the team i- is worth pursuing. Even if they do 10 practices and maybe play one game, it's better than not doing anything.
So, my hope is, I had already been, I've been talking with the fall coaches a lot over the summer and so far this fall. We're going to meet as a coaching staff, hopefully, tomorrow afternoon, and we wouldn't be starting anything until September 9th anyways, and then look at our schedules. I know, I just got an email late this afternoon from one of the other Lakes Region's ADs, and they're looking at possibly having a meeting sometime on Thursday. So, I may be leaving the building on Thursday. And, and, and trying to, I know the high schools have been doing the same thing, just trying to rearrange schedules, so.
So, there's a motion on the floor. Do you guys wanna vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not sure. Can I, what can I do?
If game's outstanding.
I'm abstaining. I'm not a medical person and I, you know, you guys have more, you know, knowledge, so, I'm just gonna abstate on that one.
Maybe, maybe not. We might not have more knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll keep you updated as we go.
Perfect.
And certainly, Kelly, we, we understand it's gonna change and will, everyone's gonna have to be flexible, but?
Right, and I would like to say upfront, our coaching staff of the fall has been very flexible and open and they are very willing to do, you know, whatever they need to do, whether it's running intramurals, just skills and drills, competing to get kids active as well.
Thank you. All right. Did you, everyone sign off on the claims and payable?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there any correspondence?
Oh, I do not have any correspondence.
Discussion time, reopening update.
So, the only, imagine this, I don't have a full thick package to review with you tonight. The only piece I'd like to recommend for tonight is, it, there's a lot of changes in regards to the symptom screening and the response to a person with symptoms or a response to a positive case. And I would just like to have the authority to update the plan without a board meeting if there's new DHHS guidelines. So, it's, if a question changes on the screener, right now, it's three questions, but tomorrow, it might be two, and the next day, it might be seven. So, I just wanna be able to do that, update that with Tanya and Kelly so we can, cause we have to follow it anyways. So, it's just a flexible document, so it's whatever that wording is, that's the only piece that I'd ask to update for this meeting tonight.
I would move that the district has the authority to update the COVID response criteria to whatever is currently recommended by Department of Health and Human Services.
Right.
But not the CDC.
I would second that. You can leave out the "not the CDC."
Well done.
It was really good until he said "not the CDC." Leave that out, strike that.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there any other business?
No.
Okay. Privilege on the floor, number two.
Kelly, if you're taking your questionnaire questions, how are you going to communicate that to the family?
To Tanya.
I'll send out a school messenger.
Up to all parents, yep, yep.
Which is the primary mode of trans-, of communication.
Yes.
So, folks know, we are not going to continually update the email list, so, the updates that are coming are going to come through school messenger, so, people need to open them and read them.
Yeah. So, I, I, everybody here has kids in the school, but I don't, so I'm not getting any of that information, so can you make sure I get that information?
We will put Frank Gonzo's on the school messenger list.
I'll put you on. Well, I, cause I don't really know what's going on otherwise.
Yes. I, I just have a question, quick question. Um, so, when I was at Min State, they actually have a sign that compares the COVID-19, the common cold, and the flu and allergies. And they break it down so parents are not panicking over like allergies. Like, my granddaughter, she has allergies in the fall. And when you look at this, which I'd be more than glad to share with you guys at the end of this, so you guys can see what's on the wall. But I just hoping that the school, like, when a kid has allergies, it's very common for a runny nose. And in a COVID-19, it says that it's rare for a runny nose. So, if someone, if a child has a cold, so, are you guys gonna make them, like, if they have a runny nose, is the teacher gonna say, oh my God, you, you know, don't come to school, you need to go get a COVID-19 test? So, my question is, you know, parents know if a kid has allergies, it's, it's just common. So, my question is, so, if a child comes here with a runny nose, is that where you put the brakes on and say, no, you can't come into school? You're already wearing a mask, you got tissues, you got your sanitizer, you know, hand sanitizer. So, do you put the brakes on and tell them, sorry, you have to go home? And now you have to sit at home for 14 days and get a test?
So, we were concerned with that is at first as well. We don't want all our kids out of the building, cause that was the first guidance that we were given. The new symptom screener says new or unexplained symptoms. So, if it's a, if it's explained, if it's allergies, then they, they may come. So, it's, so that wording has helped us keep, I think, more kids in school.
Thank you.
So, we're thankful for that as well, because we were worried about that.
And, and that was one thing our school nurse did mention Friday to all of our parent groups, was to let her know in advance or to document that somewhere, that my child typically has, you know, seasonal allergies, fall allergies, so.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that, that makes a difference.
Yeah, I'd be kicked out every day, too, for that.
Yes. And then I have one more question. So, I know that you, you can drive down here to pick up the kids. My question is, if I were to park at the hill, my granddaughter's in second grade, she's a little tiny little thing. And I was wondering, because I know it's the first day of school and not holding against the school, I mean, it was rough picking her up. Um, and I was thinking that I felt it would be easier if I walked down and like stopped, not coming out to the school, but, I mean, walking down the hill and like going, um, almost to the entrance where you pull in, you know what I'm talking about? And like stopping there and maybe like wave to her and say, okay, walk across, and so I can walk her up there? Because I almost got hit twice today to pick her, her off. And, you know, I'm not a person that like, I will, I will not sue anybody, but, and I know, like I said, you know, it's fun, so we're all gonna learn from our mistakes today and go forward and keep improving. But, I was thinking, maybe it might be easier for I to just walk down and be like, hey, grab Sam, let me pick you up and, and walk her up. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that, and I don't wanna disrespect the school and I wanna obey the rules. But I felt that I, I was like scared and I was not happy, you know? So, I just thought, maybe, until you guys smooth this off, you know, if you guys don't mind, if I can just walk down to a certain spot, whatever you guys agree to, and then I can just like holler to her or something and then have her walk over to me, you know, whatever you guys, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. We have many parents walk, walk down and collect their kids. If you wanna do that, absolutely. We just ask that you communicate with us that that's the plan. We'd, I'd actually prefer it, though, that if you come to the sidewalk, take your second grader and walk back through, that's, that's better for us versus sort of waving a child through the traffic. I'm not comfortable with that.
Right. I just wasn't sure how, and I didn't wanna like step on anybody's toes and disrespect anybody. And I just wanted to just find an easier solution until you guys smooth it off, if you don't mind.
Absolutely fine.
Thank you very much.
And, and I would suggest that you pull past the entrance to the elementary school.
Oh, I'm gonna be walking.
Okay, I thought you were just pulling off your car somewhere and then getting out.
Oh, no, no. I, I actually live right on Smith Street, so I can just park right when I get out of work and just haul tail. I need that exercise. It's fine. Thank you very much.
I have a question about drop-off. Um, is the 8:25, is that gonna be like for the rest of the year? Like, I'm, I'm a single mom. My mom helps me out with picking her up, and I'm supposed to be working eight, and now that I can't drop her off at 7:45, I am late to work. I signed up for the before-school program, but that also costs money and there's no financial help set up for that quite yet. Um, so I'm just wondering, is this, is this an all-year thing? Am I gonna be late for the rest of the year? Or are you giving guys a bunch of money to drop her off early? Um, so I'm just really curious about what the status is about drop-off.
Well, our, our faculty don't start until 8:15, so, even, and contractually, they're in their classrooms not supervising kids actually until 8:30, so the 8:25 is pushing that as it is. So, I think that the best thing for you and I to do is to work with Lisa Ash around the financial piece for the early morning program. That's, to me, that's the best solution for you at this time. I do think that we, we will probably be at a very diminished, um, early drop-off. It will, it will be through registration, which I actually think is important for us to know, rather than kids just get, getting dropped off, we need to know who's in the building, who's supervising them, that we have the right ratios. So, I think it's a big change for the Plymouth community, but, but I don't want finances to be the hindrance to you accessing that program.
Okay. Did you wanna speak about your?
Me?
Yeah. Sorry.
Uh, this is my first shame on me, my first feeling. I have five children, none of my last one.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. One I had brought up at the meeting, the first day kind of orientation, and that was, and it was answered actually as far as what were the conversation on a child's emotional toll through this COVID-19, the ripple effect. My daughter, I'm glad to see she's fearless now, you know, like, but I was afraid that there was gonna be that long-lasting. And there is a little bit of unnecessary fear in life, you know what I mean? I think we all know what I'm talking about. And one of the things I was asking, another, on that same basis, has there been ever, I probably missed it, I see them on TV, kind of on Channel 9 when I catch it, a discussion in school boards about, um, parents' education on the tablets or the Chromebooks in combating. I know the school's platform is protected from outside sources and such, but there are some of us out there that are, were taught Apple computers. We've been, you know, we've been out past a little while, and I wanna be diligent and be able to combat my 11-year-old now with social media and such, you know? I read a lot. I'm reading all the time, cause of all the big news, it's constant, constant research. I'm reading one that I never have in my life, you know? But, I was just wondering, is there a conversation, maybe with the state police or local police about maybe educating the public and our community about, you know, and, you know, just educating us as parents how to protect on, you know, so many ways that child providers to reach our children through communication and all.
So, about every two years, we've had some different presentations for parents and actually for children, or middle schoolers, not the younger kids so much, about online safety. And I think it's a, it is another time that we should do that. So, we do, we have done that in the past as a district. We've had a detective from the police department come in and work with parents to educate them on the current apps that kids are using and the protections that you can put on your devices or on your kids' accounts, so that you do have some parental control on that.
Yeah.
And I'll definitely make a note that that's something that you're interested in.
Yes.
I also wanted to just say that Jeff Lines, who's our computer tech teacher, and Geneva Sambor, who's our sixth-grade language arts teacher, are willing to do some Google classroom training for parents, and we have a flyer that will go out, just so, and that's not so much about safety as much as use of our tools, so that the parents can understand what, what the kids are supposed to be doing. So, we're gonna offer that after school this week on Thursday, uh, and then next week on Wednesday and Thursday, we're gonna do it, uh, we're gonna have one from 3:30 to 4:30, another from 4:30 to 5:30, and another from 6:00 to 7:00, so that working parents really have the ability to, to, to access that.
Sounds awesome. One last question, I'm gonna kinda step to the emotional with the kids. Um, one I was gonna ask, I know in our handbook, we have no hat posts. I was wondering, we could maybe ask a little laugh to the teachers since we're dealing with these masks and everything, so long as it's not distracting class, like, whether these kids slide with a baseball cap or whatever. Uh, you know, you know, I kinda like a give and take, that's one. And, and the other thing, are, why don't we get a discussion going in the community and in the school concerning how, what are we talking about with kids when it comes to like, um, news? Like, when we were growing up, they could like watch 10, 15 minutes of the news every night, you know? Be, know your world. But in the reality, we're in a world now where there's a lot of sensationalism news that's not really factual. And also, we're in a world where people are controlling their impulses and behaving like adults when they discuss these things, you know? So, grown adults, where these children are seeing our news, are throwing temper tantrums and breaking and burning things down because they disagree. You know, I wanna make, I would like our community and our school to focus on maybe some way of educating our kids how that's wrong, and we all need to learn how to communicate our views and our differences without violence and impulse control is possible. Because I feel like our nation is approaching this area where we're telling everyone that our feelings run everything and impulse control is impossible. And I wanna, I feel like that needs to be a big change in education.
I feel like the elementary school does a good job about making sure that everybody knows what's right and what's wrong, honestly.
Yeah, I, I get that. I'm talking about the, the news, you know, because we, like, this is different for, I believe, for a lot of our parents, like, I don't know, maybe they wear the same things they're seeing on the television, but it's a little more often and it seems to be a little more being displayed, adults just losing their mind, having conversations about their differences and who they like. And like, for instance, my daughter's expressed her worry and concern about expressing who she favors in her view as a child, you know, politically. And I, like, I've even been trying to question, what do I say to my daughter like that except for, you know, as an adult, I said, don't talk about religion at work, don't talk about politics, because it could run you into some problems, especially today. So, how does that work in the classroom when some of our kids are bringing that into the playground of how we act about who we like politically and how we express that?
I'll comment. I know in our, in our last presidential election, a lot of our teachers more so talk about the process of, of election and how does government work, and have held mock elections, and really take them through that, that understanding of everybody has a choice and, and opinions and all of that. And once the election was over, there was a lot of discussion through it. But we didn't get a lot of really negative feedback from kids or anybody going at each other, I think, because there was a process that they started to understand and learn. And they know that our school is used for voting as well, so they see the process in place different times. Um, so, yeah, I would say we do a good job with that. We also are really implementing morning meetings, and so that's also a place for our teachers to be checking in with our students, their social, emotional health. Try to respond to maybe some of those questions that they might have, always in a pretty even manner. Um, I don't think that a lot of our teachers right now are assigning students to watch the news. I think we ourselves all know what's on the news, too.
It's hard. I try to give, you know, but it's really hard now, like.
Right.
What you expose to.
Right. And, and although that's the only thing, we can't control what happens within their own household. If they're gathered around the TV and they're watching the news, you know, we obviously can't come into everybody's living rooms to control that. But, but I think certainly when students do have questions and they ask them to teachers, you know, we will try to handle that as, as evenly and respectfully as possible. So, we really try to teach our kids to be empathetic and see both sides of everything.
And thank you for coming. And I just wanna piggyback on that a little bit. We have PD in town, too, which is a great resource, and they have, they have parent nights where they invite parents and we get educated on all kinds of things that are going on in our teen world and our kids' lives. And then there's also the JACTS program, which I know the legacy students is, are your kids involved in that, too?
Yes, for our little sports.
Okay, so, and that might be something your daughter is interested in, and it's, can you guys speak on that a little bit, Margaret JACTS? I'm gonna be right on the spot. It's basically an organization. It's basically an organization where they kind of take on some of these, um, food.
Tough conversations.
Younger, like the Jax is against community drugs and alcohol prevention. And so they recognize the need for it to be in the younger grade.
Yes.
And so they come together and do community things at a younger group, and they branch out into the SAU. There's one, some of them have good education.
Yeah, I'm going to use it. I'm going to use that, we get so many.
Yeah. We'll let the kids know when that program starts to open in the building, and I'll make sure that we show.
Katie's got a parent night coming up on the 24th, I want to say.
If you look up Katie, online, C-A-D-Y.
Okay.
They're great.
C-A-D-Y, okay.
She loves the social media, so her family.
All right, great, thank you.
I, I just want to say something to this gentleman. Thank you for bringing up both those topics. I think they're, they're awesome. But also, as, you know, I raise two kids, plus my granddaughter, help them out with my daughter and my granddaughter, that when we do watch the news, just a little advice is, as a parent or grandparent, always talk to them and let them express everything. And, you know, I always give my granddaughter a book so she can express whatever she needs. And I, I'm very honest with her, and I do my research. And, and you're right, you don't want to go to work, you never want to talk about politics. That's a big no-no for it. But, you know, when a kid does ask, you know, get your facts. Don't, don't be, you know, don't be one-sided, don't be left-sided, or however you want to say it. You just want to give them the true facts.
Yep.
You know, and be honest with them, and that's how they're going to learn. And, and when they see, you know, bad things like that happen on ITV, you can be honest with them and tell them, that's not right, and that's not how a young man should act or a young lady should act. And the support groups, and go into church, that, the youth groups that they have at church, do that. That's my recommendation.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak for, for privilege on the floor? No? Anyone? Anyone?
In the chat.
Yes.
Yes. Hello?
Hi, my name is Mary Cornish, and I just would like to sort of make a comment and for people to hear and think about. I know that athletics is really important, and I understand the importance of physical activity and exercise. But I know, also know that the school has taken great care to keep children in the same classroom in pods and not even interacting with children outside of their own classroom. And I am concerned, and I would like people to think about, when you have children in a classroom now who are going to be interacting with multiple children in multiple schools and coming back to school. So I just, it seems a little ironic that we're being so tight within our own school, and then we're loosening up in terms of going to other schools and interacting with other people, given the current circumstances. And I'm not anti-sports in any way, but I do have that concern. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Motion to go into non-public?
Hey, before we get to that, just wanted to say thank you to the administrators at all levels, the faculty and staff. You've got day one down. Good job, these teams. Not only the folks in the city, but all the faculty and the staff and the community and the parents, right? I feel like this organization has like moved a mountain just to get to this point. There's going to be some more bumps, but really outstanding job. I couldn't be prouder of the town that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to Jenny Lee.
Happy birthday, Jenny.
Happy birthday, Jenny.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for coming.